As I've been through this chase. And the damn thing is out of order, out of money, or something like that. So you end up having to run around the side park and then go inside anyway.
You and Lake and what have you to go skiing.
Oh, well.
And them people in the Owens Valley hated LA. They just came in there and raped them of all their water. But that does not take any, it helps LA, but they have to make care of all LA's water needs.
All right, well, we're having to call this meeting for lack of interest.
Yeah. And people that are already here with an operating safety tank, we don't want to crush those guys. But new stuff, if we can get it on super, we should. And that way we get to count all the recharge volumes.
Joe, I have a question for you.
Well, we'll get there.
Well, I mean.
Can you give me a number of what our annual obligation is to the police safety fund?
People that have been here forever and have only had safety, they know what to do.
I look through the numbers, I guess I don't know where to look, not being an accounting type.
Right.
There's a, there's a lip there that forms from sediment.
But I can, I can say.
You know why I ask that is because I keep reading stories about Phoenix and Glendale and Mesa all being in trouble.
Oh, we're in trouble too. Yeah.
Of the total annual, so we're trying to make up for the new law that got passed two, three years ago or so.
Well, the problem with P, see ASRS, they spread the cost over all the cities, counties, school districts, businesses. Everybody pays exactly.
We're trying to make up for Prescott Yarnell is one of the big deals.
No, it's, it's us. Our contribution rates are based on.
From what I understand, they want to be the system.
They worked in the system.
Doing their business, doing their business, whatever it might be, not any, any safety tank, water pump and well pumps.
We have, with Chino and stuff, if they hire older employees.
I'm glad it's coming.
And let's say they have fifteen years, they work five years, they retire.
We pay them twenty years.
We pay them, it comes out of our pay. And their subsidies are something one percent.
Right. I was told that.
They pay us, how, fifty thousand.
OPM is good. Other people's money.
So the, in my opinion, it's best that way.
Well, that's.
But it's based on your local entity, it's based on our experience.
But the laws is for throughout the state is uniform.
Yeah.
Based on the state legislature passing a bill back in eleven or twelve or somewhere like that, right?
No.
But I tell you, it's eating people up.
So I will give the chief a buzz. How you doing, Mike?
Mike's doing good. You ready? We play softball, we won, so you can't ruin my day.
We won that softball, so we're ready to get down with the stars.
So there is, there is an entry in here?
I don't break it out.
Oh, you don't? Because you know what concerned me was that auditor who was up there that night, back four, five, six months ago.
Yeah.
She made it clear upfront that she wasn't even addressing the retirement kitty.
Oh, the Gaz 6, and that's the Gaz 64 stuff? That doesn't affect us cash flow. That's just an accounting entry.
But the money's got to come from somewhere that goes into the kitty.
We're paying the money. We're already paying the money.
From where does that come from? General?
Daryl! Is there any, is there any chance you can come down for the budget meeting?
But the only people we're concerned about, we don't have a fire department as such.
Right.
So the police officers. So the kitty is strictly for the kids, police.
Okay, sounds good. So you just.
Not making words, bunny slippers, we don't care.
But we have our own retirement program.
Oh, knows what, well, uh.
Which is now regulated by the state.
Mike says, wear your bunny slippers.
Oh, it is.
Arizona State Retirement System.
But a different set of rules than the safety deal.
Okay, sounds good.
You gotta have eighty points instead of twenty years. Contribution rates, the employee.
They can wear bunny slippers.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I just called Darrell Croft, he said he's gonna wander down, and Mike told him he can wear his bunny slippers if he wishes.
PSPRS, we pay like twenty-seven percent, they pay like nine right now, but they're going to twelve.
Yeah, usually Lon Turner will call me if he's gonna be out of town.
The public PSPRS, it depends on the, the fire department, the police department, and that's what your contributions base.
If you can give me a copy of that or whatever, something, give me some information.
Joe's, Joe's one of those folks you have to see in color. You know, just listening to him on the phones, no good.
But what concerns me is that I keep reading about these bigger towns down, down in the valley, like Phoenix, Glendale, Mesa. They're all suffering.
Well, we are too. I mean, it's affecting us.
Probably not to the degree they are though. I mean, they're talking millions and millions of dollars they're behind, that they have to put in money they don't have supposedly.
But ours at twenty-nine percent, it's still big, so.
Wow.
There's Mr. Lon.
Ah, there's Mr. Lon Turner, in living color.
She called me something that started with a Q.
With a Q.
Quanso. Something, something like that.
Hello, sir, how you doing?
Good.
Donald?
Good evening, Donald.
Hey, my man, how you doing? I'm all right.
Yeah, just a couple of minutes ago, Don was talking about these other towns that are all suffering, and I thought, what, they got mayors like us?
Well, you've worked over there. Uh, the safety requirement for the firemen and the police.
Oh, yeah. The, the, the camera stuff, or you're talking.
They're pensioned, they're pensioned.
That's huge. Firemen and police, but that's what I was asking you about.
But you're hurting the cats.
Phoenix game, undead. Nobody can press good.
In a particular direction now, it's kind of exciting.
Glendale's.
Yeah. It's, it's, uh, you figure, the old days, you worked for, oh, the fifty, sixty years, retired, and you died ten years later. Now, you work forty years, you live forty more.
Ah, that stacks it up.
Well, the funding of it too, that's mandated by the state legislature.
Yeah.
We got plenty of people here.
Oh, yeah.
Handing the mayor, or the vice mayor.
Coffee's ready?
Coffee's ready. Is anybody going to?
No, thank you.
Can I get a shot if you wouldn't?
Only if I carry it back to you, I guess.
All right.
And the star of the show.
And now, live.
That's double espresso coffee, extra caffeine?
We're interviewing today for a sergeant, and they have, it's a different interview process these days. They have people all over.
It was down.
Come in and they go through, like, role-playing and all kinds of stuff. And we must have had probably, I want to say, twenty-five, thirty people, police officers in here.
Yeah.
And there was a stack of donut boxes back there that was like this tall. And do you think they left a single donut behind?
Just black. Thank you. They left what?
They didn't leave a single donut behind.
They're good policemen.
I didn't even see any donuts, it was like bare claws. That's all I saw.
So tell me, Lon, when you interview a guy to, to work on windmills, do you have role-playing there?
Um, no. First word is, are you afraid to work? If they aren't.
I didn't give it full words.
Are you afraid of heights?
That's good. Are you afraid of heights?
If you're afraid of heights, because I, I'll tell you, I've made that mistake before.
No kidding?
Oh, yeah. I got a guy, uh, this has been years ago, and he was a big boy too. He was probably two-hundred-and-sixty pounds. And I'm up on the mill.
Mm-hmm.
And I said, hey, I need a wrench and whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, and he gets it. And so I do what I need to do. It's okay. Go down now. He's about thirty foot in the air, right below the oiling platform, and he's just like this.
And he froze, yeah, yeah.
And I said, could we go down? He says, I can't look down. Oh, man. What, what do you mean you can't look down? I'm afraid of heights. I said, why didn't you tell me that before you climbed up? And I had to climb, I had to climb over the oiling platform, not on the ladder.
Yeah.
And climb down the ribs and get underneath him.
Yeah.
And take one foot at a time.
And take him down.
And take him all the way down, and I'm just going, God, I have a good fall. And he's, I'm done.
Yeah, yeah.
Your book's going. And he just, just said the highest he ever got was a tailgate of a truck after that.
Yeah.
I'm taking up on the cranes that I've worked on.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
I used to love climbing those cranes over in Long Beach.
Yeah.
That was neat.
You know what it costs? The elevators get installed, don't you?
Mm-mm.
Have a guy, an operator have a hard cap, and he weighed about three-hundred pounds.
Mm-hmm.
And the cab is too high for any extension ladder that the farmhand has.
Yeah, yeah.
That was exciting, watching that. And shortly thereafter, they made us install elevators for all of the cranes, retrofit the old ones.
Wow.
All the new ones came to come with elevators. They can walk him out of the cab and to the elevator, and down he goes.
And down he goes. And at Salt River, they'd have just thrown you.
You're going right off the edge.
Roll you off the edge.
My morning's policy are today.
Yeah, they have, man, those, uh, those sky horses, it's amazing how, how far out that, that boom goes on those things. Yeah.
Chief's on his way.
Chief is on his way, we haven't heard from Glendale.
No.
Uh, yeah, they can go ahead, and when I was there, we had nineteen wide, and it were buildings, twenty-three wide.
Yeah, yeah. Pretty amazing.
It is. They thought cruise ships were bad.
Yeah. If it's okay with you guys, we can go ahead and get started, and, and Joe can get the, the introduction out of the way. The chief can show up in a moment. We're gonna go ahead and get started, we can do the roll call, and then we can add in the vice mayor, because he should be pulling in the parking lot here.
I hear him now.
Oh, you hear him out there?
There he is. You thought I was joking.
Well, slipper, not a worn.
Vice Mayor, is Hopper's coffee ready? Can I grab some?
You're gonna have to wait like it a cup.
We're gonna have to wait.
He must think he's special.
He does, he's.
Back there, right?
He's, he's, yeah, let's do the roll call from back there. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, may we have the roll call?
You may. Councilmember McKee.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Wojcik.
Here.
Councilmember Hatch appears to be absent. Councilmember Best.
Here.
Vice Mayor Croft.
Here.
And Mayor Marley.
Here.
All right.
Our first item of business is a presentation and discussion regarding the fiscal year 2015-2016 preliminary budget. Mr. Joe Duffy, live from Chino.
Okay. Hi, Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmembers. My name is Joe Duffy, I'm from Chino Valley, Arizona.
Mm-hmm. No mumbling.
Yeah. Actually, thank you for all coming. Tonight, we are here really to present the preliminary budget for fiscal year 1516. After several months of really hard work, numerous meetings, analysis, and discussions, we are presenting a solid financial plan for the next five years. Although we only adopt the budget one year at a time, we've looked out several years to ensure the town, Chino Valley, has a stable financial position. Mayor and council, you guys should be commended for making numerous difficult decisions over the last few years that have set the town on a solid financial footing. Although the work is not done, we are on the right path, and over the next few years, these decisions will begin to bear fruit and ensure that Chino Valley's local government is financially stable. Also this year, I want to express my sincere appreciation to all the leadership team, to Robert and the department heads for all their efforts in helping out, helping put this budget together. It's truly been a team effort. More importantly, they should be commended for running their departments in the most cost-effective way possible. Each year, I'm continually impressed with the innovations that come up, that they come up with to save money for the town while still providing the same or greater level of a service, and I'm sincerely saying that. So it's, you know, I see it on a day-to-day basis, you guys will see it with annual financial reports and monthly financial reports, how well we're doing, but we are doing significantly, we're doing better each year because of their dedication and hard work. Um, so, actually, this is Robert's.
Yes.
I could do his, too. No. Okay. So the preliminary budget this evening, we would like to talk about, I just wanted to go over a few things. One, just our total revenues and expenditures. A, a quick summary by fund through all of our major funds, general, HERF, capital, water, and wastewater. A quick department overview, and I'm just gonna focus on the departments that have had changes in it, the ones that are pretty much the same year after year, we're not gonna go over tonight. Our capital projects, and then I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Robert, and he has a budget message, you know, from him, and then we thought we'd open up for questions and answers. And if the council wouldn't mind this evening, we'd like to get through the presentation part, and then just open it up for questions and answers with all the department heads here.
Okay.
If that'd be okay.
Okay.
A few things new this, this year that we need to focus on is, one, we've set up a customer service department in the general fund, and it's really no cost to the general fund, but we've moved the employees over there, and we're charging them out to other water, wastewater plant or building where they were coded before. But we're preliminarily getting ready to set up a full customer service department, and so we're making the budget change here, but the net effect is zero to the general fund, the money's just being allocated out like it was before. But knowing that that's step one, so next year, as we continue to build the customer service department, it'll, it'll already be set up. We prepared and updated interdepartmental charge analysis, and what that is, is when I got here, they were coding, using payroll to code to all the departments. So if one department was doing work with another, and let's say our public works director, he spreads his time throughout multiple departments, they're using payroll to do it. So we cleaned that up, and then we started using what we call interdepartmental charges. We kept those numbers the same for the last two fiscal years. Well, this year, we did a study to make sure that the, that we're allocating the proper amount of time between the departments. In most cases, it had no effect, but there are a couple of departments where it increased the cost or decreased the cost quite a bit. So just to let you know that we've done that analysis, and now, we have a really good firm baseline, we know where the numbers came from, so we continue to update it throughout the year without any problems. And it's actually a very common way for towns and communities to do their budgets and charge other departments for, for various costs. And the big thing tonight that we want to spend some considerable amount of time on is we've analyzed and projected the capital requirements for the next ten years, including the amount that the town cannot fund. So, and that'll be near the end of the presentation. So the significant expenditure changes that we had is health insurance increased five percent this year, and we also increased the town's contribution for dependent coverage from twenty-five percent to thirty percent. That's a net cost of thirty-two thousand dollars. PSPRS is up one-point-six percent, added another five thousand, or eight thousand to the budget. ASRS actually went down just by point-zero-zero-one-three of percent, so essentially, it's flat, but they thought it was a big number, big savings to us. We've added two full-time equivalents, as you know, the human resources director, and there is a wastewater plant operator in the budget. Now, we're not planning on hiring that right away, we just wanted to put it in more as a placeholder, and because we really don't have the grasp on what's gonna cost us to run the plant. That may be a entry-level position, or it may be a mid-manager, or we're not sure, but we put a nice number in there just to hold, and until Ron, you know, brings the need for us, then we'll fill it. But it is, it has increased our full-time equivalents up one, anyway. And for right now, it's just a placeholder. There's a one percent cost of living increase across the board, this is based on this League of Cities and Towns information they get from the Census Bureau. And that, and our effort there was to keep everybody, their, their net check even with the health insurance increase, so that's what we're trying to do. The Prescott Water acquisition's in the budget, the USDA finance, including the Molly Ray Sewer, and the last thing at the bottom is the impact fees. This will be the last year we have any left, we're spending them all, or ninety-nine percent. The total town revenue, as you notice, I, on the left side here, I have a little page star, so if you'd like to look at the page numbers in the budget, and I'll go along with you too. What I'm putting up on the screen is the very summary of what's on these pages, so it might, it might help to look at them. So, so total revenues this year are twenty-four million, nine-hundred-eighty-one-thousand, five-hundred. We break that up into the governmental funds and the enterprise funds. So our governmental funds is seventeen million, six-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, and our enterprise funds is three million, three-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand. But interesting, the chart right below it, is you can see how we break out those funds. And we've actually done some comparisons with other communities to make sure that our tax collections equals their tax collection, so it's just good information to see. Now, the one thing that's important, though, is our total revenue is projected to be up six percent next year. And what I did is I took out all the, all the grants, all the debt, all the transfers, and all the carryover, and I tried to narrow it down to how much new money is coming into the town to get an apples-to-apples comparison, because as you guys know with our expenditure limitation laws, we have to throw everything in the bucket, whether we're gonna do it or not. We have to think that it, you know, if we think we're gonna borrow twelve million dollars, we think, we're talking about it, we need to put it in the budget now so we can spend it, even though we might only borrow three million dollars. So this breaks the debt, this basically, I filtered it down to day-to-day, um, you know, this is the raw numbers, or the raw nu cash that comes into the town. So, and so the takeaway from this slide is that our general fund revenues are gonna increase four percent next year, we're projecting, and our HERF revenues are gonna be up five percent, but in total, our revenues are gonna be up six percent, and we'll go through these in detail, and I'll show you where, why they're going up and why they're going down. Compare that to the next slide, where our general fund revenues are only, expenses are only increasing two percent. So our revenues are going up four, and our expenses are only projected to go up two. So we think we're gonna be in pretty good shape with that. Now, we have increased, you know, we have notched, yeah, it just came up. Thank you for that. Yeah. Yeah, we have increased, um, we're not ultra-conservative like we have been in the last two fiscal years, we've tried, we've turned the dial a little bit up to be a little more realistic, and so we're taking on a little more risk, but I don't think it's an exorbitant amount of risk considering how things are going and how the revenue's going. We need to get our needle back to realistic, so that, you know, because if you underestimate your, your revenues and expenses, you have huge carryovers every year, and so we're collecting money and we're really not spending it, so it's a balance, it's a very fine balance on it. And, and so now, we're just changing, we're just turning that up just a little bit this year. On forty, forty-three, page forty-three is the general fund, and actually, forty-three and the, the next few pages that go over each fund are probably, if, if you can get a grasp of this, this is really the big picture of each, each fund. And as you can see, this, last year, we budgeted seven million, eight-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand in revenue, we're gonna collect seven million, five-hundred-and-eighty-six, the difference being our, uh, uh, carryover funds that aren't in that number. But next year, we're projecting seven million, nine-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand in revenue, with eight million, forty-eight thousand in expense. Now, the, the thing that, that we're doing the first time in the general fund is we're proposing using fifty-seven thousand dollars of the carryover next year, seven thousand essentially to balance the budget, but fifty thousand dollars, we want to transfer to her fund to help supplement the amount we're putting on roads. Even with that, we're gonna carry over two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars. We're projecting a deficit, or essentially, we're projecting excess funds of two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand at the end of this budget year. Now, something came up yesterday that will be coming to the council on May twenty-six, that we're gonna be asking to use another sixty thousand this, this year, and it'll be at the May twenty-six meeting. So we have a project that came in over bid, so, or the bid came in over, so we'll bring that back. But still, we're adding two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars to our fund balance, or it's gonna probably be a hundred-and-fifty or so. That's still a very healthy amount of money to continue to build our reserves up in the general fund, and this is the position we should be in every fiscal year. The general fund has transfers in, as you know, we have a hundred thousand that we've been moving from the capital improvement fund for the police. This year, we're gonna bring a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in for the aquatic center from, from the capital improvements fund, and then the police, they're, uh, they have a special revenue fund that they do towing and stuff with, they give us another ten. So we are increasing the amount we're transferring into the general fund this year. The HERF fund is on page forty-four, and I will start this on a new page in the, in the final budget. I guess the takeaway that, the, the most important thing is, as you know, we've been using up the fund balance in the HERF fund, trying to get as much money on the roads as possible, because we know a dollar today will save us several dollars in the future, and, and doing as much repair as possible now saves us a lot. We have been, we have been pretty aggressively using those, that fund balance that the HERF fund had every year, and this will be the final year. We're down to about two-hundred-and-eight thousand, uh, we're projecting to end the year at three-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, and last year, we began the year at seven-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, so we have been just dumping lots, you know, basically using these funds up. Last year, we used a hundred-and-seventy-five on road material and a hundred-and-fifty on the Perkinsville roundabout. Next year, we're projecting a hundred-and-fifty-five in road material. So the, the cycle, and that's including fifty thousand from the general fund. HERF funds did go up a nice six percent, the state distribution, so, which was a nice thirty thousand bump more than we had projected, but it's still far less than we need to adequately maintain our roads. So we need, we're, we're gonna have to come up with alternate ways to fund our road projects. The capital improvement fund, got, it is on page forty-six, the same scenario, a little more detail. We do a lot through our capital improvement fund. This year, we have, and we also buffer this fund with two million dollars of revenue and two million dollars' worth of expense, and that's just in case we get a, let's say, a, a large grant, or somebody writes us a check, we can spend it in this year. So we use it to buffer our expenditure limitation. We're going to use the remaining road impact fees of five-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand this year, that, that'll be it. We have the Yavapai Drainage Project, it's an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar project, it's coming to council on Tuesday for approval. It's a hundred-and-fifty thousand we'll spend between now and June thirty and six-hundred-and-fifty in future years. We have no bond issues here, the Prescott Water System bond I put in the water fund, and so the amount has gone, of rev, or revenue side's gone down quite a bit. The expenditure side, we have five-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand in road impact fee front projects, and if you see at the top line, the very right-hand side under budget fifteen, sixteen, that's two million, forty thousand dollars. Two million of that is our buffer. Forty thousand is for wiring and stuff at the, at the youth center, some of the money aside there. We have, again, the grant match for the Yavapai Drainage, and then we have a million, thirty, one million, one-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand of transfers out. So overall, the, if you look at the actual fiscal year fourteen, fifteen, we had total revenues of six million, four-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, and expenditures of six million, five-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. So we spent eighty-three thousand dollars more than we brought in. However, our fund balance went up because we started last year with a couple hundred thousand dollars more than we anticipated when I was standing here last year. So our fund balance is gonna end at about four hundred thousand dollars, and next year, it's gonna be up to five-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars. So we're not spending everything we're bringing into the capital improvement fund, which gives us some flexibility, and it's one of those things that we need to talk about is how we want to spend this money in the coming fiscal year. So, and, and in my opinion, it's, it's a safety valve, it's good, again, to save, and let's, let that build up, give us a little more resiliency. The Water Enterprise Fund, what I did here, it's on page forty-eight, all the details, and it's a lot more detailed than I have on this slide, but the one thing I wanted to express this evening is our operating loss is going down, and it's the effect of new new accounts plus our rate increases that we're instituting every year, but it's still significant. And in the water system, they're out of cash, so this is a cash amount. Now you also see how much we're transferring in, um, this year we're going to transfer in 280,000, next year I'm projecting we're going to do 150 and the reason I'm leaving it a little bit higher is I'm trying to build their reserve balance. So we're funding that. So even after the water system becomes profitable and is, is positive cash flow, we still are going to have to subsidize it for a year or two until that reserve balance gets up to a healthy level. And then at that point we can say, okay, now they can start paying us back, let's come up with a way to do that on there. So that's why, that's why I'm just trying to push a little more to there because it'll minimize how quickly they can start, it'll, it'll give us the ability to start paying back sooner than later. And of course, the number one thing next year in the water enterprise fund is the Prescott Water Acquisition. The sewer enterprise fund, you can see this year we're going to have a net operating loss of 268,000. This is pretty much exactly what we expected to happen as we knew we were going to dip down, dip down a little bit low, but look at the difference in 15, 16, that loss goes from 268 to 66,000, it's essentially 200,000. Now I will tell you, we have overestimated expenses here a lot because we are not sure what the wastewater treatment plant, what it's going to cost us to operate, what we have to do to, you know, any repairs or things like that. So we're being alter conservative here. Just the one position, if we don't hire it, will bring the fund possible profitable, but I bet you, knowing the way that Ron operates his utilities, that this number will be positive next year. I'm, you know, can't guarantee it and hopefully I'm correct, but I just have a really strong feeling that we are going to be positive. The other big project here is the WIFA refinancing or the USDA refinancing with WIFA, basically reducing our interest rate from about four and a quarter to hopefully around 2% interest. It'll save us $40,000 a year if we do it. And, but the only problem is you need new money, you have to have a new project and we've identified Molly Ray as, as doing a sewer line up to there. With us, pretty comfortable with a $500,000 number, I think we're refinancing six to seven million dollars worth of debt if I'm right. So it, they just need to have a new project and then they can roll up old debt into it. So it's one of the things that we'll be bringing to council. These are the town departments that didn't really have any changes whatsoever. I mean, you know, office supplies went up, utilities went up a little bit here and there, but on a percentage basis, they're within just a few percentage points, either lower or above on it. And it's most of our, you know, general fund budgets departments just do the same thing year after year after year. I mean, I, for example, the senior center, their food costs went up, but Cindy found other ways to save here and there and it, their budget went up a little bit, but, but not really a lot, a couple thousand dollars. So, but I do want to talk about some of the departments that had on a percentage basis a significant amount. One, and, and this is really pros and cons, good and bad. One, the town clerk's budget went down by 19% and that's really the direct result of no election next fiscal year. The municipal court went down 16% and that's because we changed from the magistrate from employee to essentially a contract person on it and if the council decides to go back the other way, back as an employee, we can just take it out of contingencies, but this seems to be working, so there's a good chance that we'll continue this way. Non-departmental, um, it essentially just went up 8%, but there's a few items in here I do want to talk to you about and one of them I know is legal fees. We're over budget by 15,000 now, it could be higher, um, but we're projected to be up 20,000 next year. So I know you guys are working on it, I just, from my perspective, please work on it really Liability insurance is up 10, 10,000. Arizona Department of Revenue has taken over the collection of sales tax from all the program cities and the non-program cities and now they're charging us $25,000 a year to do it. So thank you very much. Nothing we can really do about it, uh, it's allocated, the amounts allocated by, by population overall across all the cities, but it's a fee we're going to have from now on. And I'll probably just move this to the finance department next year. I like to start these things in non-departmental so they're, they really stick out, but we'll just send it over to finance next year. And then of course, uh, non-departmental has to transfer to HERF. And even with those, even that $75,000, we're, you know, we're only up, you know, 60 some thousand, so we have, we've had cut some things back there. Human resources, of course, you know, hiring a human resource director affected that budget. Animal control, uh, Chief Nguyen made a really good decision, he filled a full-time position with two part-time position and it had a nice little positive effect on his budget. We've added about 12,000 to the county GIs, MIS GIs budget, really as a placeholder because there was talk about maybe having them help, maybe not, we don't think it's going to happen, but it's just more of a buffer than anything if, if that comes to fruition. The money won't be spent if, if, if we don't do anything and it'll come to council for approval if we do. Parks maintenance, we looked at utilities, had a, had a nice little savings there. The road department personnel savings, down 5% just the, the change and some of the changes they had in their department and road materials reduction of about $20,000. Water operations, we did save 21% by reorganizing the customer service department and, and getting that set up. And there were several one-time expenses we had this year that we're not going to have next year, so that really helped the water department. And of course, the wastewater department, uh, this is really a good number. If you look, we budgeted $982,000 last year and we're budgeting 751,000 this year and I have already told you, we've, we've buffed those up a little bit. That's what the net effect of, of acquiring wastewater treatment plant was to the sewer system. So that is a really positive, it's, you know, close to a quarter million dollars that we have saved by doing that. So, and the reason it's down year to date is because Ron got the plan operating and we took it over on April 1st and so we have, um, you know, about $90,000 in savings right there this year. So by him getting that done quickly, that's just been money in the bank for us. The capital improvement fund, uh, it's on page 169 and has quite a bit of detail on it and I just sort of on this chart summarize the big projects. We broke it out, we don't have any bond funded projects this year, the one we did was the wastewater treatment plant and I'm going to move the water acquisition to the water plant this year. You can see all the roads that Ron's projecting for the road impact fees and we're going to spend the final 529,000. Now there is a line item, project to use remaining funds of 219,000 to be named later. We'll figure it out as we get closer, exactly, and we'll bring that to council too. So we're just thinking that we'll probably put as much money on the roads as we can this year and this will use those. And if not, we can carry them over too. We have the P, we have the drainage district and no lease purchase this year and we just have a couple carryover projects, uh, we put $40,000 in for the community center wifi and wiring and we have $50,000 in for the rural economic grant match, so we have a little there. And otherwise than that, you can see how our transfers to the general fund, to the water fund and to the debt service fund. The debt service transfers are pretty steady right now. The water fund, you can see it's reduced as we talked earlier and then the general fund has an extra 150 from the aquatic center going in it. So on page 172, we did a little analysis here and, and I just brought the total numbers over, but we actually looked at every piece of equipment we have from police vehicles, all our machinery and equipment, all of our pickup trucks, our mowers, anything that we've capitalized over the years, we brought those over and we looked at them and said, when are we going to have to replace them? And when we replace them, how much it's going to be? And we just estimated, you know, we didn't go crazy, we just said, ah, you know, that mower probably has five years in it, so we dropped a number in. And we brought all those numbers down and that's really what this chart summarizes is our police, our machinery equipment, roads, facilities, and we really haven't, we have, of all the facilities we have, we're really not setting anything aside for any major remodels, any, you know, sometimes we're going to need, you know, all-new carpet and paint or whatever. At some point we need to start dropping money in for those and whether we just put it in and just save it until we need a half million dollar remodel or upgrade on one of our facilities, we have it. So, um, we also did the water system infrastructure and that was really just a guess, okay, we're going to need a tank in these years or whatever, and then the sewer system also that, you know, eventually we're going to need to make some major enhancements on it. So we dropped all those down and, and we did a real detailed analysis on each of the assets throughout the time. And so that, if you can go to page 177, and actually I passed out a, a sheet that's probably easier to read than what's in your budget book. The font came out really terrible when we printed this and it's like, so, um, Robert asked me to put that out for you. But what that did is we took that total capital needs amount, including, you know, the roads and everything. And so for example, this year, we figured our total capital needs were 5,246,000. Now we did buy some equipment, we bought, uh, some police cars, we bought, you know, a couple dump trucks and a loader, we did 175,000 in roads and of course we financed the construction of the wastewater treatment plant. But even that left us in a deficit of about 913,000. Again, the, the biggest number that is driving that is our roads and being behind the curve on our roads. So if you walk that forward into 15, 16, we're looking at a deficit of about a million three and projecting that to just continue to go up and down, but being in that range. And about a million one of it is our road construction. So this is where staff really needs input from council. This is the next big issue that we have to deal with and we need to look at alternate funding sources, how do we prioritize what we do? And we need to have some really deep discussions. In fact, I think it ought to be part of you guys' strategic financial plan is to get the capital side of the budget in balance or at least working. I mean, we can't do it tonight, I know that, but, um, it's just an issue that, that is going to continually drive, we're living off the town's depreciation right now and we can't do that forever. So. And Jamie, I am stuck. There we go. There's a few other budget items, thank you, um, that I, that I won't talk about real quick, but I just wanted to point out that are there. We have our bonded debt summary and that shows all our debts, total issues, total principal and interest. Our personnel schedules, uh, and Laura's done a wonderful job on explaining, it details all of our benefits, what we give to our employees, plus the number of employees, positions, the whole shot, so that's worth a little time. We do five-year revenue projections and expense projections in the final four page in, from 195 to 199. And we did a, quite a bit of analysis in the other community comparisons and what I did there is I took all the cities and towns around 10,000 people in the state and we actually have several of them in Coquigny County like, like Cottonwood, Camp Verde and Sedona. And I also took Prescott and Prescott Valley and I compared all of them together and how we compared to their average and then I took out the big boys, Prescott and Prescott Valley and did an average on all the, the small ones and how we did. So if you get a chance, look at those comparisons, I did, we did little charts and stuff and it'll show, you know, how, what our per capita is per police officer, or how much we spend on recreation per capita and things like that. So it really gives you a comparative of where we are in relation to other communities because we're really all in the same business, providing services to our citizens. And we have, you know, we're, we're not apples to apples, I'll never say that, but we're, you know, we're in the same business and some, some communities are richer and poorer, but I think if you look at us overall, you're going to see that we're doing a pretty good job of keeping our expenses down. And then of course, the official state budget forms which will, which will change if, if we make any adjustments. So, um, with that, the final steps that we have left in the budget is on May 26th, I'll bring to council a tentative budget and we'll make any changes and corrections that we find between now and then in this, reprint the book. Once we do the tentative budget, we'll put it out on the website and we'll, we have to publish it in the paper for two weeks and then on June 23rd, the council will have a public hearing and adopt the final budget and including the, the Chino Valley Lighting District, we'll have that information in also. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Smith.
Don't leave Joe because we do have questions for you, okay?
No. Thank you, Joe, thank you, council. I'll try to be really brief, I don't want to keep you guys too long. The first thing that I wanted to say was, this is the first year that Chino Valley has had all of the elements necessary for it to have a financial plan. A foundation for sustainability, a foundation for planning, a way for us to be transparent, a way for us to be accountable to, uh, the townspeople for our performance and, and I wanted to roll over that a little bit, but this is no longer a budget. This is a financial plan. There aren't a whole lot of communities our size that have all this. A lot of communities our size don't produce a revenue manual or a comprehensive annual financial report. We're, we're doing some things now that are setting a course for council and for our town to secure sustainability and have a, a smooth incremental track. I also wanted to say, it's incredible that we are where we are so quickly. This is year three and we've built all this in three years. With the challenges that we faced as a town just on the operational side, the fact that we're here and we have all this really speaks to the strength of our financial department as well as all the other departments that have kept our operations in line and kept us out of trouble. And I really want to say thank you to our staff for doing that. I've got three basic parts of a presentation. First, I wanted to speak a little bit about, uh, the environment in which we're operating, uh, the manage, managerial and operational issues. I wanted to talk just a little bit about budgeting and planning, uh, the operations versus the capital side, uh, which is new territory for us. We as a town haven't been doing this, this has not existed. And then I wanted to talk about challenges and opportunities, I think I only have about four slides. And, and this may be new territory for viewers, it's old territory for council, but, um, we start out with a budget and the budget is our financial plan. We generate a revenue manual that sets the expectations for what we expect to be able to get in terms of revenue and at the end of the year, we settle up by providing a comprehensive annual financial report that reports on our performance. These three things are those three foundational elements I was talking about a second ago. We go through our operation during the year and then an outside group of experts come in and evaluate what we've done. And they look at federal, state and local codes, regulations and laws and they tell us whether or not we did it right. So council approves all of the money, all of the expenditures that are represented in the budget and then throughout the year when work is done, anything over 25,000 comes to council for its approval. And then at the end of the year, council is presented with that audit by outside experts on what we did that year to ensure that we're compliant. We do this so that there's transparency in our work and how we handle the public's money. That talks about how we go about doing it, but what is it? How do we decide what we're going to do? Council has a strategic plan and in that strategic plan, it expresses policy goals and priority for the administration. Council approves the work throughout the production of the year based on those 25,000 limits. Benefits accrue to the community from all that work, there's feedback that comes back to council from the community, council decides what it wants to do, evaluating and adjusting the, the financial plan, its strategic plan, and then we start the process all over again. So that's the picture of our year there. We haven't, uh, addressed council's strategic plan this year, we hope to do that soon. We've introduced the capital side of the budget, uh, and, and that's new territory for the town of Chino Valley. Operations and operational reserves are now compliant with council's requirements for reserves and sustainability. It's now time for us to tackle this capital side. And, and the problem is, you'll see in the budget, there's an unfunded capital schedule of things that the administration knows are going to be necessary and we don't know where the money's going to come from and we need council to help us set priorities so that we can go after things in the appropriate order. So that essence of council doing the strategic planning and setting the goals and directing the administration on that side is crucial for us. In order to get here, we've had to overcome some conflict and challenges. Initially, we were in litigation with the city of Prescott. We have dealt with that and through the, uh, settlement of the lawsuit, we secured the past due amounts and an agreement for the future five years for cash flows. Uh, and now we're able to talk to the city of Prescott about acquiring that water system. Likewise, on the Bright Star, uh, well, we had a conflict with, uh, Bright Star and that precluded us from being able to negotiate the wastewater treatment plant buyout. Those two elements are the key elements to the town being able to break even on its water and sewer utilities and get off of the general fund. There's a chain of events here, adding users to the utilities breaks them even, that creates an opportunity for us to freeze utility rates and hopefully roll them back as well as accumulate capital reserve funds for the utilities so that when things break, they can be repaired. And by getting those things off of the general fund, it leaves money in the general fund for us to tackle roads. Our objectives have been to stabilize utilities and freeze and eventually lower those rates as soon as possible, uh, leaving money in the fund, the general fund for roads, creating capital reserves for the utilities so that they can be maintained properly and then begin paying the general fund back, the 1.4 million that was taken from it, uh, by the water fund. We also had to resolve a land conflict, uh, and a 12 million dollar litigation that was in front of the town to eliminate that liability, um, off of our operational, um, funds. So all in all, these are the things that we've had to clear in order to try and move forward. The fact that we have gotten to this point where really the last thing is the Prescott Water Acquisition again in three years is pretty rapid for government speed. An example about, of the kind of work we would like to do, I think last week the mayor announced that the EDA, uh, had awarded us, uh, the grant of 1.6 million dollars for the creation- the creation of the industrial park. The town took a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of its money and has created a pool of right at two million dollars. And that's, for every dollar the town puts in, there are fifteen and a half dollars that come to the town from somewhere else for this project. The way this is working, there's a significant match required for that one point six million dollar EDA grant. What the town did was, the town went to the Commerce Authority and said, "We want to apply for a Commerce Authority grant." That required us to pony up eighty thousand dollars, and for that, we got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We also went to APS and asked for a grant. The APS grant, the ACA grant, and the town's eighty thousand dollar match to those things creates the match for the EDA grant. That way, we're cross-matching grants so that the town has very little funds of its own, very little of its own money in the project. So again, we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in a two million dollar project, and hopefully, using the old home manor property, will create some employment once we get the infrastructure out there. We're now collecting letters from businesses to express their interest in developing out at the park, and we're going to begin the marketing program on that soon. There was one more slide that I had. Sorry. So the real meat and potatoes of what I wanted to get to in the presentation was, there's an annual cycle here that is now possible in Chino Valley because we have the tools and the foundation in order to build it. Council establishes the goals, the administration delivers what it is that the council is directing, benefits are created in the town, there's public feedback generated, hopefully that's positive. Council makes adjustments and does the same thing over and over and over again. We need to be doing this all the time. This is the recipe for success. It's the recipe that pretty much every council manager, form of a government in America uses. It's proven, it's the process we need to be engaged in. In doing this, the council creates the strategic plan, the budget, staff does the revenue manual, staff provides ongoing financial reports and an annual report. The audit occurs to ensure that everything's true and accurate, and the council goes through this revolving process year after year after year. That creates transparency and accountability, that's what the public wants to see. They want to see stability, they want to see incremental movement in a positive direction. We have all the pieces now. This is the first year we're talking about capital. We're introducing the capital question into the strategic plan. The foundation now exists for us to be able to go through this process together and answer all of the questions that need to be answered so we can move forward with certainty. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. If it pleases council, can we, I'd like to ask Joe back up. I got a couple of questions for him, and then we can ask Robert any questions that we have. Joe, if you would, on your first, on your first panel, you brought up the customer service department. You said basically it was hidden within all the other departments. You were just sort of establishing it, and you were going to bring it in, yeah, your first bullet point.
Right.
Net cost is zero. Talk to us, or to me anyway, but maybe the rest of the council understands it, but talk to me a little bit about the customer service department.
Okay.
What are we doing with that?
Okay. Well, what we're trying to do is bring customer service all together so we can have one manager over the several employees that were in there. And the ultimate goal is to have the same level of service here at Town Hall as you do at the Public Works and Building Department's window over on the other side. So when you come to Town Hall now, you can't fill out a building permit, you can't get a business license, so we send everybody over to the other campus. So our goal is to cross-train all these employees and have, and you should be able to do everything here that you do there, and vice versa. So that's the ultimate goal, that we're doing it. So we're just taking, we're doing the structural change to set that up. And, and over the next, and it might take us two years to do it, but we're starting. We're going to start cross-training, we're going to start moving, you know, getting the data processing and all the electronic, everything else that we need over here so we can do that. Now, you're not going to be able to meet with the building official here.
Right.
I mean, that's a given. But you should be able to, you know, hey, here's my plans, here's my permit application, here's the check, and then we can get it over to the other department and they can work on it. You should be able to pay your utility bills here. Should be able to do, shouldn't be any different, and that's the goal, just to improve it. So what we've done is we've just moved the employees into that department, but we charge them back to where they were originally. So it's just step one.
Okay. Yeah, that's sort of an interesting concept, decentralizing it, because I've, I've been here a number of times when folks would come in and say, "Where do I pay my sewer bill or whatever?"
Right.
But, yeah, anyway, we'll visit more about that. That's an interesting concept. Yes, sir?
What, what has allowed us to do this is the upgrade in software that we deployed this last year. And so we want to be able to train both administrative front ends to establish a wire account, deal with a past due sewer account, take payment on a bill. There are some things that aren't transferable because they have to be face-to-face, but our software has empowered us to do a lot of these things. And we're not talking about adding headcount here. We already have people in place doing stuff.
Right.
What we're hoping to do is empower them to be able to do more on the customer service side, so we're not sending people back out to their car when they walk up to the window with their checkbook out.
Okay.
You know, if they're ready to pay. We want to be able to facilitate that transaction at any administrative front end.
Okay.
So it's a plan that we have, it's a multi-year plan. We're not looking at adding people, but we are looking at adding capability by empowering them through the software and technology we have.
Okay. Yeah, as long as we got the software and it doesn't cause a train wreck, that's, that's good. The next item, the Molly Ray, that's the refinancing of one of our USDA loans, and you said that we needed to have a project to attach that to. And I didn't know how much the rest of the council was, was privy to that. I only had a few of the details.
Yeah, so we have the USDA loans, there's actually three of them, and they're six, seven million dollars in total that we owe now. And they're at four and a quarter percent interest. And so, as you know, the sewer money, we borrowed at two point oh one percent interest. So with, with today's interest rates, we're, we went to WIFAS and said, "Hey, could we refinance this, cut the interest in half?" And they, they said, "Yes, sounds good, but you have to have a new project, a new sewer project, since it's sewer debt, to do it." We asked them how much, we had a conversation with them, and they pretty much said, "You know, it needs to be around a half million dollars." So this is a project that Mr. Gritman came up with, that's, you know, pretty straightforward, gets the sewer up center street to the Molly Ray subdivision, which has a dry sewer in it already.
Right.
So as that subdivision builds out, people can connect to it. So it just sounded like a real simple, straightforward project to do.
Okay.
But the net effect, I mean, as Robert said, our goal is to stop or reduce sewer fees. This is forty thousand dollars a year towards that goal. Even with the new payment on this five hundred thousand dollar debt, we're still ahead. So it's just like refinancing your car, but you got to buy a new set of tires when you do it.
You bet. And do we have a ballpark figure of how many accounts we're going to be add when we pick up the Molly Ray subdivision? I know it's dry pipe.
One oh five. Currently, there are three houses that are built out there that will be required to abandon their septic systems and tie on. And there are two more building permits that have been issued for it. The total development is about a hundred and forty-five, a hundred and forty-eight units total, so.
Okay, thank you. That'll, that'll give us quite a few more accounts. Excellent.
Do we have water out there, or Willis, if we buy the Prescott Water System, pipes, would that in fact cover Molly Ray?
Yes. Molly Ray, Molly Ray is one of the CDID properties that Prescott did extend water to under the nineteen ninety-nine buyout. And then what they did was just tie onto that under all of the Prescott obligations to serve them the paper water. And when we acquire the Prescott system, Molly Ray will come over to the town.
Oh, that's cool.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
And a hundred and forty accounts at, with the six thousand dollar buy-in fee that we have generates eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. So just them connecting will pay for the five hundred thousand.
Yeah, I was running the same numbers, and it's, it's a little over a hundred thousand a year in usage fees as well.
Okay. You bet. More customers we have, and naturally, I'm, I've made it known to both council and to our staff, I, I want to have, as folks build houses, I want them to be tied in, but I really have heartburn with running the line past somebody's house and making them tie up, so. Excellent, thank you. Oh, and the last but not least, this fifty thousand that we're transferring to HRF, that's to complete a project, is that correct?
No, it's just for road materials.
Okay.
I mean, and so Ron can use it for chip seal, crack seal, whatever he needs it for. It's just, it's supplementing that road material budget.
Okay.
That he has every year, maintenance.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could speak to that.
Yes, sir.
The, the more that we can spend on resurfacing now, the less we spend on repair later.
You bet.
And until we're able to get to the point where on a ten-year repair schedule, we're budgeting one point two, one point three million a year, until we get there, we need to start as soon as possible, taking a small chunk from the general fund and sticking it on roads as quickly as we can to try and forestall those pavement failures.
Understood.
And that's, that, this is a feeble attempt, but it's, it's the best we could come up with this year.
You bet. And I'm, I'm, I'm good with trying to keep our roads up, but I'm also good with trying to lower our sewer bills. And Joe and I had a...
And that is the, that is the two dials that you have competing against each other. Right now, today, without this fifty thousand dollars, we would be right around, what, about ninety, a hundred thousand, a hundred and five thousand we would have for the chip seal program, which will do barely two miles.
Right.
Barely two miles. Every year that we continue to live off the depreciation of our streets puts us closer to the rapid. When a roadway sees its last thirty percent, forty percent of its life cycle, it will drop seventy percent. It just drops like a stone. It takes a wet spring and a garbage truck, and that's all it is before you're driving back on gravel again. The longer we keep living off of the depreciation of our roads, the more and more and more this is going to hit this town like a freight train. Robert and I have been working for the last, me for the last nine years, but Robert for his last three years, is how do we get water and sewer into the black? And by doing so, it gets it off of general fund. We've developed the strategies that we need to, you'll see those in the coming strategic planning section, sessions that the council's going to be having. But we have a way how to accomplish this. But we have staffing problems, we don't have the staff that we can support a one point two million dollar chip seal program. We have alternatives for it, but these are things that the council is going to have to weigh in. What are the things you're interested in? And the more and more we contract out, the more expensive it is, which is the less amount of work you can do. But the more that you need to do in-house, you need more personnel to do that with. And it's another competing, two competing things that the council wants to try to minimize.
Yeah.
But yet, we're still sorely short. We're a hundred and fifty thousand this coming year, we need one point two million.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, it's amazing what we are running short on our roadway maintenance.
You bet. Yeah, I wasn't griping about the fifty thousand, I just, Joe and I had a lengthy discussion the other day over the same thing, the two dials. We, we, we don't want to lose our roads, but we've got to buy some relief for our folks that have been carrying the weight of this sewer system. All right, thank you. And that's it for me. Did any of you have...
I have a couple of other questions. Back to the, back to the first item the mayor brought up with the Group B, or what were you calling it, the customer service?
Customer service, yes, sir.
Is that the way that you're setting that up? Is it going to affect, how linear is it going to be across the board of affecting the different departments? I mean, you're, you're keeping the monies all the same.
Right.
You're moving some people around, so how is that going to pan out?
Yeah, Ron could maybe answer better, but it's more, I think, to do with the supervision of the employees than anything.
In terms of linear, it's not linear, it's flat. There is no change in how customer service was ever operated, what the employees were doing. What we're trying to do is bring it under one management individual. The way that we've got it set up right now is Mike Bouvet runs half-time plant operator with another utility employee helping him. And then he runs part-time customer service manager. So he literally is at the plant until noon and in the office until five. What we've done is bring the three girls at the front window under his supervision so that we can start getting some uniformity in cross-training, get uniformity in how staff are, are performing jobs, trying to get away from that silo thing of, "This is what my job is, and I don't do utility billing." No, you're all in customer service now. You take building plans, you take sewer payments, you take...
P and Z applications.
Yeah, build a business license, P and Z applications, zoning requests, everything. Mike answers to both Ruth and myself, obviously to Ruth on P and Z issues and on, to myself on utilities and, and public works related issues. So our intention was trying to create a better consult, a better management structure for the three employees that are within customer service. Now, I will tell you, with some of the utility acquisitions that we are proposing and that we have got coming up, we will be adding bodies in customer service. We're going to have to. We can't keep adding new accounts without having people there to be able to service the accounts. Those are all factored into future costs that you'll see during the, during the strategic planning sessions as we go. But our intention with customer service is to create something that can be expandable. As Robert said, he wants the girls down here to eventually come under customer service so that they will be able to do the exact same thing, although building permits are a little bit difficult because you have to review the plans and make sure that they've got everything. But everything else, business license, utility payments, everything else are going to be done at multiple windows throughout the town. So that's the intention behind the customer service consolidation. But it doesn't affect any prices in any way, shape, or form because they're already town employees, we just put them under one little silo, one little customer service piece.
Yeah, and I understood that part, you know, that what you were doing there. I was just wondering, as far as the monies are all staying in the same place, is any one department by doing this going to be taxed any more than another one, just on personnel time?
No more than what they were prior. Mr. Bouvet would probably argue with me a little bit on that one because, but we're finding the plant to be a little challenging. It's fine as far as costs go, we're going to still be way, way, way under all the expenditures that we've projected. We didn't anticipate finding some of the things that we have found out there, but nevertheless, it's okay. So Mike's, the first month, we've only been since April first, so we literally have had one month doing this. Mike comes into my office and just shakes his head and just dumps on what he's found out there at the plant. I keep explaining to him, "As the next three or four months go by, that will start to decrease, and you'll eventually get your arms around everything, and the plant will be operating just fine, and you'll be able to set it up as more automated." To give you an example, we encountered the exact same thing when, when Public Works took over the pool. When we took over the pool, we found that a lot of the automation systems in there had been bypassed and weren't being followed. So we came in, set everything up so that, let the computers and let all the automation stuff run the chemicals in the pool, and we found that people's eyes don't burn anymore when they get out of there, and your swimming suit doesn't fall apart after one season. So we're doing the same thing with the plant, it's just on a much, much, much larger scale. So.
Mr. Smith had something?
Just a real quick thought on the customer service... Just a real quick thought on the customer service perspective. We have three ladies over at the Development Services Public Works Building that work out front. One of them is a Public Works employee, I think the other two are Development Services.
One's utilities and one is Development Services.
And so that group of ladies that we're trying to get to all be able to do the same kind of things are managed by different people. And we want there to be enough flexibility up front that if somebody needs something, they can go up front and ask for it and the ladies will figure out which one of them has the bandwidth and be able to produce it. The ladies over here in this pool, when we have absences in the Public Works Building, we want them to be able to sub in so that we have somebody that can come over or, or back the other way and, and fill a gap. And for that, there's got to be cross-training. And the ladies over here work for yet another supervisor. And so by having all of the different supervisors managing the different pool elements, it's very difficult to coordinate the pool. So we're looking at, how do we put this under sort of one, one managerial effort and make it more flexible and frankly, more powerful over here so that people that come to this building can conduct business with the town without having to be sent back to their car?
But as Robert was saying earlier, under the old way of taking building permits, we could not have done this. We, we could not have done, you had to have done the Citizen Serve software that they have over there to simplify the building permit process. Otherwise, we couldn't be doing what we're doing right now. It is through the technology that public, that Development Services and Building are bringing online to help streamline and simplify their processes, that we're able to free up some of the ladies' time up front and start doing this cross-training the way that we're doing it.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, past experience, there's nothing worse than waiting in line and then find out you're at the wrong line when you get to the counter, so.
Yeah.
And having to go someplace else, so.
I, and I will say, some of the things that we're going to be doing this upcoming year is putting in, moving towards kiosks so people can come in, pay their bill without ever having to interact with the actual humans behind the, behind the, behind the counter. Just come in, pay at the kiosk and then leave. We're trying to do some things like that in order to try to minimize those lines because the lines are getting sometimes, I mean, I've been up there, you will see four or five people deep and it's a small window.
You're probably not going to get a fanfare from me on that one. I kind of like talking to people.
Yeah.
They'll still be there. You can go talk, you just, if you want to go automated, you turn left. If you want to talk to the bodies, you turn right. That's what it's going to be. But our intention is trying to minimize those lines that are out there. So.
I had one more question on, back to page 43, I believe it was. We've got these transfers that you spoke about that were, there was three of them. There was two to police, one to the pool, $100,000 to police, capital improvement, and of course, the pool, and, and then the 10,000 was a special revenue. Can you just give a little bit more of a definition of what these are?
Okay, the two, the police and the Aquatic Center, that's money from the capital improvement fund over to the general fund. So, and the capital improvement fund, of course, is the 1% sales tax. The special revenue fund police is a little fund that we keep tracking, I might even have chucked them up and explain it, of when they, when they seize a vehicle, they have towing fees and hearing fees. And by state law, we can only use a portion of it. He has to use it for specific things. This is the amount that we pay for the towing. So let me have him explain it. Thank you, sir.
Some of you were here a while back, remember? We built our own impound yard for the 30-day holds on cars. There's a state statute 3511. If you're caught driving on a revoked license or suspended license, we impound the car for 30 days. And there's two sets of fees. There's a storage fee, which is set by statute at $15 a day, and then there's a hearing fee of $150 and then the towing fee. And what happens is that after the 30 days, if the person recovers their car, you know, they pay us all the fees, they take their car back. In some cases, they don't want the car back or can't afford to get it back and it's returned to the towing company so that they can sell it and recover their tow fee. But by statute, it's split into two funds. Part of it goes to the PD, part of it goes back to the general fund. And so that's why he has it split up. And then we also have to pay the tow companies. If the person comes in and gets their car and pays us, they also pay the tow fee to us, which that we then remit to the tow company so that the person doesn't have to go two places, they can just pay all the fees in one spot. Does that make sense?
I understand the transfer of funds as far as for that person paying for towing and, and impound, but I, I guess I'm still not following why. It almost appears here like we're losing money. Are we?
No.
Okay, then, this is money, this is money that's collected that is being transferred over.
It comes into the special fund and then Mr. Duffy transfers it from the special fund to the general, part of it goes to the general fund, right?
All right.
So, no, we're not losing any money.
Right. Yeah, we have a special fund where all these tow fees come into and then we make our towing payments out and then we get a portion of it into the general fund.
Okay.
So it's money you've collected.
Did everyone else notice how Chief Wynn left before I could ask him why they repainted the Humvee? I got drawn for elk this year and I wanted that Humvee, but that's, you've reserved it. All right, thank you.
Help transfer a lot of funds in.
Any others for, any other questions for Mr. Duffy? Any questions for Mr. Smith? No? Excellent. Well, cool. The chair would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Sir, it was late.
Mike, what happened? Your special be the...